I'm taking after Mr. Lloyd. Meeting called to order of the Community Economic Development Committee. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Fluehle?
Here.
Commissioner Lloyd.
All right, we have the approval of the minutes. Resolution 2025-1720, April 16th, 2025. What's your pleasure? Moved, is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported, do we have discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. We now go to public comment to this committee. Is there any public comment? Please state your name for us and then your comment.
Hi, I'll be real quick. Dominique Clemens, Genesee County Clerk and Register of Deeds, Flint Township. I just wanted to share with all of the commissioners, as I'm sure many of you are aware, last night was an election in Genesee County for a large number of our communities, and we started the canvas this afternoon. I just wanted to give kudos to all of our local city and township clerks that participated in the election process. This was our smoothest election, and for the first time in recent Genesee County history, all votes were counted, cast, and displayed before midnight. I was home before midnight on an election. I wanted to share that news with you and the great partnership we have with our local clerks, and yes, that included an election in the city of Flint. Thank you.
All right, do we have additional public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Darren Bagley. I live in Mount Morris Township, and I just want to thank the commissioners and Josh Freeman for all their help with the Genesee County Youth Commission. And most K-12 education, young people learn a lot about federal government, but very little about state and local government, and this program through Michigan State University Extension 4H aims to resolve that, and the young people will be presenting it in a little bit. They went through an issues identification process, they toured a lot of county departments, met with the judges, met with the jail, a lot of different things, and we'll hope you take their recommendations into consideration. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have additional public comment? Do we have any additional public comment? All right, public comment is closed. Under Communications, we have 25-151 Sports Commission, Foundation, and Event Center info. It's not clear to me, Mr. Freeman, what this is.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. I don't know if this was something that Dr. Brown wanted to talk about, but she's not here tonight, so if we could just drop this and if we need to bring it back, we can do that.
Okay. Without objection, we're going to drop 25-151. Any objection? All right, we do not have old business. Under New Business, we have Resolution 2025-1580, and I'm going to allow the Youth Commissioner from the 4th District to read out the resolution.
Approval of request by Genesee County Planning Department to attend the 2025 Michigan Transportation Planning Association Conference in Holland, Michigan. The travel dates are from July 22nd to 25th, 2025. The cost of travel is for five staff members.
Move it.
It's been moved? Is there support? Is there support?
I moved it.
Oh, you moved it? Okay, and is there support?
Support.
Got it over here. All right, thank you. Do we have discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? All those in, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fluehle.
Yes, sir. Who can speak on this? Is somebody here?
Derek Bradshaw can speak to it.
Okay.
Derek, if you'd identify yourself.
Good afternoon, good evening. Derek Bradshaw, I'm the Director of Planning for Genesee County.
To the Chair, Derek, what is the, what's the overall cost of this?
Overall is $5,844.40.
Who's paying for it?
Funded through our federal grant that we get for transportation.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, thank you, Derek. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We have Resolution 2025-1718.
Approval of request by the American Junior Girls Golf Association for a three-year sponsorship of the Randy Wise Junior Open at Spring Meadows Country Club. Total of the sponsorship is $37,500. The cost of this sponsorship will be paid from the Genesee County Accommodation Tax.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move it.
It's been moved? Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Let me just say that we do have Amari here, and I don't know if you want her to maybe say a few words about this. I asked that this be placed on the agenda. It's been, it was sent to Dr. Brown and me and maybe Commissioner Shoemaker, too, several months ago, from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and there's a time-sensitive nature to it, as I understand it. Amari, why don't you just come up and say a few words, and then we'll see if there's questions? And if you'd introduce yourself with your title for us.
Tyler, you might need to help me out over here, because it's not recording. So, Amari Stewart, Executive Director of Explore Flint, Genesee, Convention and Visitors Bureau. As you all know, we are contracted by the county commissioners to serve as your destination marketing organization. We were presented with the opportunity to provide financial support through a request for proposal from the American Junior Golf Association, whom has been in our community for going on 30 years. You are tasking us to attract business new and retain the old business that we have in our community. So, this event has been in our community, like I said, for going on 40 years, and I think this is an opportunity to not only sustain the event, but secure a multi-year contract as we enhance our visitor experience. The American Junior Golf Association, they host individuals from all across the world. They have to come right to Genesee County to compete for their tournament, and I think this is a great opportunity to showcase our beautiful county. They also stay in our Airbnb, so residential homes also host some of these athletes, so we're able to showcase our residential area as well. And of course, we do collect an accommodations tax from that, so it does support and regenerate and repopulate and sustain itself for the ROI in this community. They do service about 30-room nights per night during the time that this tournament is hosted in Genesee County, so they do have a significant amount of hotel stays, but in addition to that, the players stay in our Airbnbs as well. So, I'm very happy to support and endorse this event on behalf of the Convention and Visitors Bureau in order to sustain and help to grow this event in Genesee County. A representative from American Junior Golf Association is also on the call right here. This is Patrick Kansfield. He's not able to be here in person, he's not local to the community, but he's committed to growing this event in Genesee County, so I would like for him to share a few words of the impact that this has on, and why they choose to host this event in Genesee County, and to want to secure it for years to come. This is a three-year commitment, so you would be agreeing to a three-year commitment, and Patrick can talk a little bit about what that looks like.
You're on, Patrick. Can you hear us?
I can, yes. Amari, thanks for the great introduction, and thank you, County Commissioner Shoemaker, for also inviting me today. Excited to speak with everybody. So, yeah, to kind of get started on our side, so I'm Patrick Kansfield from the American Junior Golf Association. Quick fun fact, I actually grew up in Port Huron, Michigan, spent my first 18 years in Michigan. My grandfather, he actually went to Arthur Hills there in Flint, so very familiar with the area. I grew up playing AJGA events as well, actually played in this event back in 2009 when it was held at Warwick Hills. So, definitely, close to my heart, something that means a lot to me. Currently, I live down in Atlanta, Georgia, that's where we're headquartered with the American Junior Golf Association. And for those who aren't familiar, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and our mission's been the same since day one, back in 1978. We're dedicated to the overall growth of men and women on and off the golf course, with the end goal of helping them earn college golf scholarships. So, we have just over 10,000 kids from all 50 states, 60 countries that compete with the AJGA. And all 1,400 NCAA college coaches are also members of the AJGA. It's really the main recruiting ground for college golf. We do have a very diverse staff. One of the more robust internships in all of sports, we have over 115 interns annually that help put on our events all across the country. This year alone, we'll host 148 events worldwide with that global presence, as well as 115 qualifiers associated with those actual tournaments. Something that we're very proud of outside of kind of our main mission is what we do on our foundation side, so our Liberty National Achieving Competitive Excellence Grant Program is a financial assistance program that helps those kids that have the talent to compete at the national level, but maybe lack the financial means to do so. And so, what's neat about it is it helps them play not only AJGA events, but also USGA, PGA of America, independent events all across the country. So, a player from Michigan could apply to that program, and it could help them not only play State Golf Association of Michigan events, but also AJGA and some of the others that I just mentioned. Additionally, kind of where we're at, you know, the AJGA, we're trying to make the game as affordable and accessible as possible. Another way that we're doing that, currently, the AJGA today is actually cheaper to play than it was back in 2004. So, we continue to reduce all entry fees associated with playing AJGA events with that end goal of them being, you know, as affordable and as accessible as possible. Getting into kind of the event that we're talking about today, so the Randy Wise Junior Open, we've currently hosted this event at Spring Meadows Country Club here for roughly the last 10 years. This event itself brings in 78 kids for our qualifying event, which is held on that Sunday. This year, that would be August 11th, and then the 12th through 15th will have 96 independent junior golfers, so separate from that 78 qualifier field, that will be in-town competing for that event. Randy Wise Automotive has been involved with this event for the last 18 years, and what's really cool about it is there's the give-back component there locally, so the Flint Junior Golf Association has been the benefactor of this tournament since the beginning. We've given back almost $125,000 to the Flint Golf Association through this one event, so it's definitely been very impactful to the community. And economic impact-wise, it's helped bring in, you know, $2.1 million since 2015, kind of when we began tracking that economic impact. In regards to who's playing in the field, from last year's event, we have 18 states represented, as well as five countries, with kids coming in from as far as China, Turks and Caicos, as well as New Zealand to compete. We did have 33 Michigan natives competing in the event. We also had 11 past champions that were in the field, and 16 of the kids that were playing in the event had already committed to play college golf, which is, you know, super cool. Over the years, this event has welcomed a lot of, you know, famous individuals that a lot of you are probably familiar with out on the PGA and LPGA Tour as well. So, Phil Mickelson actually won this event back in 1987, as well as 1988, and then Morgan Pressle and Paula Kramer both played in the event in the early 2000s. So, that's one of the fun things with what we do, you know, a lot of these kids do go on to play high-level Division 1 golf, as well as some of them even make it, you know, to the PGA and LPGA Tour, which is fun to see. So, that's a brief overview kind of on my side, and I'm happy to answer, you know, any further questions that you guys might have on your end.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Let's open it up for questions or discussion by commissioners. Do we have any? There's a motion on the floor to move this to the full commission for next week's meeting. Yeah? You got a question? No? Commissioner Kuzino?
Is there anybody that sits on the committee that wants to go before me, because I don't sit on this committee?
Doesn't look like it. The floor is yours, Commissioner.
I don't have any problem or any discussion really about the program. I think it's all great, and I just have a little clarification for me. The money for the cost of it, is that coming from the Chamber's share of this accommodation tax or our share?
As I understand it, it's our share.
I can speak to that. The Chamber has agreed to use $7,500 for this year from the money that we give them in that contract, and then the remaining of it will come from our fund balance.
And that'd be so for the three years?
No, it's the $7,500 from the Chamber is one-year only, because they only have a one-year contract, so they can't make a commitment past that one year. Of the 37.5, Chamber's contributing 7.5 from our allocation to them, and then we'll work doing the rest of, the remainder of it, the $30,000.
Okay, so, yeah, so we're basically doing a three-year agreement, just the funding is just for the first year. All right, that answers my question there. Now, it's just a comment. It's a repeat of what I've said before. We just recently went through the contract negotiation with the Chamber to come up with a new contract, and that was all good and fine, but this part of the accommodation tax that we keep, we really don't have any policy yet. We just haphazardly, you know, approve it for different groups that come to us for different reasons, and it's good, but we still, as a board, probably should have a workshop on it or something, but we need to develop a policy of what to do with this money, so we have a little direction. I mean, we're supposed to have a presentation earlier about a sports complex, and so I know that's a high priority for this board, but we also have to, if we go in that direction, we got to have the money. And so, we need a plan on how to spend our part of that accommodation tax moving forward. It gets to the full board, I'll vote yes, but I just wanted to make that statement, that's all.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Commissioner Kuzino, it sounds like this is a priority in terms of, you know, developing the policies, so maybe we can begin our next workshop talking about that before we talk about priorities for the year that's outstanding that we're talking through.
Yeah, we just need to talk about it.
Is there additional discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question. Now, is this 37.5 per year for each of the three years, or is this just a one-year?
All three years. Total for the three years.
When you put it that way, it sounds like more of a bargain, right? Any other discussion? Well, Patrick, thank you for joining us remotely, and Ms. Stewart, thank you for being here. You're here a lot these days.
Yeah, I'm always happy to see you.
It's nice to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We will now take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I was going to, but I'm not on this committee, so I will be next meeting.
Next week you will?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker. The motion is passed. Seeing no other business, we are adjourned.
No.
We are not adjourned.
Presentation from the Youth Commission.
Oh, under this committee? Okay, all right. Youth Commissioners, spring into action. Darren? You got this? When you're done, we're going to have Commissioner Lloyd do a class on gavel banging for you.
It's loud, too.
The Genesee Youth County Commission does want to thank you guys for your time. We have absolutely loved this program. We are thankful for what Darren has put into this, and we think, we are very thankful for the time that you guys are giving us today, so thank you. So, we came together, and we, for months, we've been working on this project, and we decided to come up with, one of the biggest problems is simply, a lot of people in this community are not educated on the pollution, and it's how it's not only just affecting themselves, but in the entire environment in this county. Did you know, according to Genesee County's Metropolitan's Planning Committee's Air Quality Awareness Page, nine out of 10 people are breathing unhealthy air. Symptoms like irritable, irritation, coughing, lung cancer, increased risk of heart attacks can happen with not good air quality, unhealthy air quality. So, not being educated on this, and the effects of pollution, that is not, just simply not being educated on this. That is, sorry, not being educated on the unhealthy, unhealthy air quality and pollution in general is important, not, is important to be educated on unhealthy air quality, and as well as pollution in our community, so we can prevent it, not just for ourselves, but for the rest of our peers. Thank you, sorry about that. So, we asked a question, and we decided to come up with our answer for how can we both better protect and educate the citizens of Genesee County from environmental pollution? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lauren Motley, a graduating senior at Carman Eensworth High School, and I'm also the County Youth Commissioner of District 3. Now, you're probably wondering, why did we choose this topic? Well, because environmental pollution directly impacts our health, our homes, and our future. As youth in Genesee County, we've seen the long-term effects of pollution, from the Flint Water Crisis to ongoing issues like dumping and poor air quality. We believe young voices matter in creating real change. This issue affects us all, and we're ready to speak up and take action for a safer and cleaner community.
Our very first pollution solution is a PFAS-free purchasing policy. PFAS, or per- and polyfluoralealkill solutions, are also known as forever chemicals, can differ chemically, however, they all have a carbon fluoride bond, fluorine bond. This causes them to have very long-lasting lifespans, simply because of the strength of their polar covalent bond. What and why PFAS? PFAS are manufactured chemicals, which are found in almost everything, from clean supplies to food packaging. They are known for their water, oil, and fire-resistant properties. However, despite these benefits, they are, they have been linked to considerable concerns for human health, including endocrine disruptions, cancers, and high cholesterol. So, what can we do? I suggest a purchasing policy free of PFAS, or preferring without. This is already written in Executive Directive Number 2021-8. This was signed in October 2021 by Gretchen Whitmer to State Department Directors and Autonomous Agency Heads. This simply asks to prefer supplier proposals for products without added PFAS.
Hello, everyone. My name is Grace Stevens. I'm a senior with Oxford Schools Early College, and I represent District 5. For our group's second pollution solution, we propose an increase in education and awareness surrounding safe household contaminant disposal. The problem is that there are a plethora of preventable environmental contaminants in every household, but most people don't know how to dispose of them safely. Genesee County needs to increase education about how to properly dispose of household contaminants. There are a few main types of household contaminants, and they are oil-based paints, pharmaceuticals, cleaning supplies, and pool chemicals, pesticides, fuel, batteries, and electronics. When these contaminants enter the environment, they can cause air pollution, contaminate water, and soil, which impacts local flora and fauna in a negative way. Additionally, the release of these contaminants can have a harmful impact on human health in a variety of ways. Our solution is to spread information about the existing events and opportunities that Genesee County already has for household contaminant disposal. There are numerous drop-off locations around the county for things like automotive waste to medication waste and everything in between. However, most people are simply unaware of them. We need greater promotion and advertisement of the Genesee County events to drop off household contaminants, and more promotion about the drop-off locations. For example, signs about where and how to dispose of leftover medications at pharmacies and doctors' offices. With that, I yield the floor to my colleague Faith to discuss our third proposal.
Hello, my name is Faith Junior. I'm a senior at Powers Catholic High School, and I represent District 4. So, what I'll be talking about today is pollution solution for septic tanks and community resources. So, why would we even focus on something such as septic tanks? Well, first off, it will protect our environment, and it will help our community stay healthy and strong. Septic tank inspections and educational resources are two very important things, but our overall goal is to prevent pollution before it happens and educate the public, because it is their right and right, and it also helps their health. Septic system point-of-sale inspection requirements. A septic, a septic system treats waste when properties aren't connected to the city's sewer systems. The point of the sale inspection is every time a property is sold, the septic system must be inspected. It ensures that the system is safe and not leaking waste into our environment, which will help, which will hurt our people, and it will also hurt our animals and environment. Why is this important, and how does this help us? It prevents groundwater pollution and protects drinking water. It catches system failures before it becomes a major health hazard. It protects home buyers from unexpected repair costs, and it supports clean rivers, lakes, and soils in the community. How does this even work? Sellers hire a licensed inspector before selling the property. Inspectors check if the system is working properly. If issues are found, then the repairs are done before sale. Results are shared with the buyer and attached to the sale documents. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lena Edgerton. I'm a junior at Mount Morris High School. I'm representing District 7. My portion of this presentation covers the recycling center as another solution. So, Genesee County is building a new recycling center in the city of Flint. You can see the location shown on the screen. We propose an education center be added to this bill to provide a place where the community can learn about how things are recycled, the importance of recycling, and ways to combat pollution, and et cetera. One of the biggest things that came up when trying to find solutions for this problem simply came down to education. During this process, we learned a lot from each other in our research about recycling and pollution. This education area would give everyone an easy access spot to learn about something that is such a big problem in our community. Overall, I have the project summary of what this would really look like. With the education center, we are proposing an idea of an additional building or a dedicated part of the pre-existing building plans to hosting people for educational workshops. The idea is that we would offer lectures, crafts, books, et cetera, for schools and people in the community overall to learn about and help us fight this continued battle. We have a lot of ideas on how these workshops could be set up and would love to be a part of planning it. Our next few slides go deeper into more of what we believe this place would look like.
So, going back on the septic tank issue, we also wanted just an overhaul to have binders of information at the recycling center. We think that knowledge is very important, and it should be a right, and it should also be available for people to understand how to recycle correctly, reducing household waste, safe disposal of hazardous materials, and conserving water and energy. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kiana. I'm a junior attending Kersley High School, and I represent District 2. So, another feature of the recycling center will involve educating the country's youth, the county's youth, through projects and activities, projects and activities. Environmental science projects help children understand important environmental concepts and human effects on the environment. Participating in these projects will help foster childhood interest in environmentalism and STEM. So, some of these projects can include an acid rain lab to teach kids about the effects that acid rain has on vegetation, a bubble survivorship lab teaching about the ways environmental stressor affect an organism's ability to survive. We also could do a cookie mining lab to teach the importance of land reclamation after mining is complete, a oil spill lab to help children understand the harms of oil spills and the difficulties of oil spill cleanup, and a waste management cornhole to help youth understand the proper categories to sort their waste into for the efficient and sustainable disposal. So, before I discuss our other activities, it's important I tell you what it is first. So, what is upcycling? Upcycling, also known as creative reuse, is the process of transforming byproducts, waste materials, useless or unwanted products into new material or product received to be of greater quality, such as artistic value or environmental value. So, as you can see, before, we have some empty plastic bottles that would usually be disposed of, but then they get turned into these animal-thin planters. Upcycling crafts, participating in upcycling does more than just reduce contributions to environmental pollution, it also stimulates child creativity and innovation. Upcycling is a sustainable practice that helps reduce waste, conserve energy, and reduce the volume of landfills. Some products that they can make could be sensory bottles, paper mache art, plastic bottle planters, or DIY bird feeders. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Kate Love. I am a senior at Mott Middle College High School, and I'm representing District 1. Today, I'm going to be talking about phytoremediation. So, phytoremediation is the process of using plants to absorb, degrade, or mobilize environmental contaminants, and along with all of the education that's being done at the recycling center, we would like to propose planting native Michigan plants as a phytoremediation site near the recycling center in order to educate the community about phytoremediation and the benefits of it. So, those benefits include that it reduces stormwater runoff and water pollution, that it rehabilitates brownfields and vacant urban lots, and it also makes the community look better and enhances our green spaces. It supports biodiversity and empowers communities to reclaim their contaminated land. Some of those common plants that are used are hybrid poplars, sunflowers, willows, Indian mustard, and native wildflowers and grasses. So, there are already some sites of phytoremediation in Michigan. One of them is actually One of them is actually in Flint, Michigan. It was done by Reroute Flint, which is a local organization. It's located right in Kersley Park. They planted a bunch of willow trees in order to reduce all of the flooding that was done there to increase accessibility and just make the park a better place to be at. There was also in Muskegon, Michigan, the Delta Poplar Tree Project, which it's not being used to extract the contaminants anymore, but it's still doing great things for water runoff. There's also the Clean Mine Demonstration Site, the Ford Allen Park. Eighteen native Michigan plants were used, and they actually saw a reduction of 10 milligrams per kilograms of the PH, which is the polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons.
And now for our final summary. Environmental pollution in Genesee County threatens our health, homes, and future. From unsafe air quality to chemical contamination, many issues go unnoticed or unmanaged. Our project focused on raising awareness and offering realistic, youth-driven solutions. These included promoting PFAS-free products, educating on safe disposal of household contaminants, ensuring septic system inspections, building a recycling education center, and practicing upcycling and using phytoremediation to naturally clean polluted areas. Together, these efforts can protect our community and environment to empower future generations to lead lasting change. So thank you for your time and listening to our project. Do you guys have any questions?
Do commissioners have questions or comments? Commissioner Kuzno.
Very impressive, me personally. I'm happy to see and pleased to see the youth studying this issue and realizing that the health of this community really depends on change in the environment. This county, you may not know this, but this county spends more on healthcare per person than any county in the state of Michigan. Well, we're at the bottom of the quality of health in the state of Michigan, so there's a big disconnect there. And so exactly what is causing that, I don't know, but I think that the environment and the past activities of this community, being such an industrial site, has created a lot of toxic issues. The landfill out in Mont Rose Township is in my district, so I've had to study more about PFAS than I ever really wanted to and know how to dispose of it. So I'm glad that you guys are looking into that, and you did a very thorough study at ways to do it. I also sit on the Planning Commission, which is headed by Derek Bradshaw. You just saw him up here speaking a little while ago. And it's under that committee that that new recycling center is being constructed. And they do, as you know, they're putting in an educational site in there. So my challenge to you guys is to stay in contact with, I don't care if it's through me or the Planning Commission, Derek Bradshaw's group, on how to use that educational center to educate the general population, but in particular, youth like you guys coming out of high school, because that's where our future is at, your future, and you need to take positive action now in life. So I'm just very pleased to see. You know, I was talking to the lady, I can't remember her name right now, from Mount Morris, and I wanted to ask her what you guys were going to talk about, and I would have been a little more prepared if I would have pushed that a little bit because I really didn't know. But those are some of the challenges that I, in turn, give to you, is to help make that recycle center a success for this county. Thank you.
We have additional discussion. Commissioner Lloyd.
I just want to take a moment to thank you for not just your partnership, but also your participation, and now your collaboration, because you've brought to us ideas that we can consider, and we will specifically as relates to this project. My colleague just spoke about the recycling center, but I'll admit, some of the things that you all suggested in here, I hadn't even thought about them, but they're ideas that will make the project more beneficiary, more beneficial for the community. I like that you suggested more of a community component where there's space, you know, where residents can be educated, where youth can be educated, where all residents can be educated as to what the process is, and so on and so forth. And so that's something I'll be thinking about and something that maybe we'll have discussion about even as a board as to how we consider kind of incorporating some of the things that you suggested. So again, job well done. Thank you so much, and look forward to considering this further. Thanks.
We have additional discussion. Mr. Avery.
Thank you all. I had a pleasure meeting you all, and just as my colleagues here, you know, I'm very fond of youth who are continuous learners, researchers, and your candor and enthusiastic feelings about what's going on here with health is very impressive. You know, we're very pressed with trying to retain talent here, you know, in Genesee County. We know you'll venture out, but you know, like the old saying, y'all come back now here, you know, come back home and take care of us. I think I feel very confident that we have some replacements standing out there for these positions. But yeah, just thank you all for your research. Thank you, Darren, for your, you know, your dedication. Yes. Yeah, he's always on point, and again, another job well done, and best wishes for all of you and your futures. Thank you.
We have additional discussion, comments. Mr. Lloyd.
One last thing, and so we kind of had a mix-up with dates for today, but there's something that we want to bring you back here in the new future before you all go off to college to provide some special presentations to you all that you'll be able to have as keepsakes for your time and your participation in the youth commission. So we'll communicate and collaborate. Thanks.
All right, additional comments? I'll just say I echo what my colleagues said. We have amazing young people in front of us and all over this community. Thank you for your dedication and your conscientious approach to this work. Really appreciate you all. Darren, would you mind introducing, and I don't know what their titles are, but we have a couple alumni here?
We have our steering committee members. There's a few others that can't be here tonight, but we have Grace Kelsey and Brianna Sierra, who've been, we had, we had more candidates, we had about 40 candidates for nine spots this year, more candidates than we ever had. And I was lucky that I had them to make the decision of who made it to the council. I didn't have to make that decision, and they've been helping guide throughout the whole process, so thanks to them. And Clerk Clemens is also alumni of the program from a few years back, yeah.
Very good. Congratulations to all. We're going to adjourn this meeting, but I understand that we have a photographer who's going to take our photo of the adult commissioners and then the youth commissioners up on stage. So no further comments, no other business. We are adjourned at 6:08 PM, and please come to the stage so we can get some photos.
Okay, it's now six twelve. I call the Finance Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kuzina?
Here.
Mr. Getzinger?
Here.
Mr. Wayhill?
Here.
Mr. Shoemakers?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from April. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We now take time for public comment to the committee. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to step up and address the committee? Second call, is there anybody that wishes to step up and address the committee? Third and final call. Seeing none, we move on. We don't have any communications. Oh, yes, we do. Crystal, Resolution 279, but I don't think we need to take any action on it.
Go ahead.
Did you want to explain things?
Sure. Good evening. That's a tough act to follow there. Not as quite as exciting either, but you know, it's required, so here we go. Each of you should have a copy of this presentation in front of you. We're going to go through the general fund, very preliminary numbers for revenue for fiscal year 2026. And I say very preliminary, and we'll talk through why as we go through the slides. This first graph shows the 2025 budgeted revenues on the left-hand side and the 2026 projected revenue on the right. Overall, revenue is expected to decrease 10.3 million. Don't panic yet. From 135.2 million to 124.9 million. But this does include ARPA money, and as we know, that skews everything for general fund. So we'll look at the next slide that takes those funds out. So this is excluding ARPA. So without ARPA, the budgeted revenue for 2025 was 120.4 million and projected at 121.8 for 2026. So that's an increase of about 1.4 million. Our state shared revenue is expected to increase again by approximately 470,000. That does make up about 12% of our revenue, as you can see in the yellow piece of the pie there. Again, this may change. As you may be aware, the state follows the same fiscal year as us. They're working on their revenue estimates right now. So this is what's on their webpage, but it does say "subject to change," and we'll update that as we get better information. Taxes, which is the blue piece of the pie, is 62% of our revenue. This does include property taxes, as well as marijuana tax for next year. As you know, under Proposal A, we are limited to our increases in property taxes to the lesser of 5% or inflation. In recent years, inflation has been high, which is bad for your, you know, household, but for our tax increases, it's been great. But typically, it's not been a 5% rate of inflation. That does get adjusted if there are homes that are sold, where we can uncap those taxable values, or if you have new developments, which we've been doing a lot of those ARPA projects for sewer and water in areas where we hope they will develop, and we will bring in more taxable value. As I say, this is preliminary. We're still waiting on the rollbacks that we have to incorporate into that estimate, as well as charge-back estimates, because we do have, unfortunately, some people who cannot pay their property taxes, so we have to estimate how much of those will be uncollectible. Marijuana tax continues to be strong. It is expected to increase again by about 200,000 for next fiscal year. In 2021, it was just about 280,000. That was our first year. And projected to be about 2.1 million for next fiscal year, so that continues to increase. This graph shows our actual revenues for 2023 and 2024, what's budgeted for 2025, and then what's projected for 2026. And again, this just stresses that those taxes are a very large portion of our revenue at 62%. Our federal, this does include ARPA, so the federal revenue, you can see the second-to-last on the right-hand side, increases, or I'm sorry, decreases significantly, because we're nearing the end of those ARPA projects and our spending is reduced, which means our revenue is also reduced in that area. So just some other highlights of things that changed. ARPA revenue replacement ended in fiscal year 2025. We'd used a million of that for that fiscal year, and then 3 million of the prior three fiscal years. Revenue is decreasing about 845,000. Our MOU with the city of Flint for the 5th Division District Court ends in December of 2025, so we only have three months' worth of revenue in next fiscal year, and typically, we had a full year worth of revenue for that. Again, we're lucky to see, once again, increases in property tax revenue pending those rollbacks. Increases in state shared revenue, again, of just over 470,000. Marijuana tax, 200,000. Our transfers are expected to decrease by 2.6 million. We did include 1 million of a transfer from DTR. I have had some discussion with the treasurer on that, but that's always subject to his discretion, and we'll talk about that usually in the budget hearings when it comes to his budget as we move forward. As we continue with the budget process, which we started our personnel budget preparation this week, we do have some challenges as we go into that piece of the budget. As you know, the, there's employee costs continue to rise, we have step increases, we have the recently settled contract negotiations, so those increases will be incorporated. Funding of our legacy costs, so our pension and retiree healthcare, I won't beat that to death, I know the auditors went into some more detail on that, but they do continue to increase each fiscal year. Inflationary increases in our operating costs, just as at home we're seeing increases in costs, we're also seeing those increases here at the county each year. And then capital needs. As you are mostly aware, the capital needs typically in a government's budget have been kicked down the road. Unfortunately, since that's easy to cut annually, it's been done not just here, but a lot of places. Starting a few years ago, we started adding those to our budget to try to increase our maintenance of those capital needs. So our preliminary expense budget will be available July 16th, and then we have our budget hearings with the departments in July and August and bring you the preliminary budget in August. Are there any questions?
Anybody from the board have any questions? Crystal, you go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Crystal. The one pie chart showed 0% federal for this next fiscal year, I think, or projected, but then you did have a little bit on the bar graph.
Yeah, it's because of the giant amount of total revenue. I think it's like point two-six percent, so it wasn't enough to round up on that graph, but yeah, it's like 300-something thousand, I think, is what's left.
Okay, related to the federal revenue, so it was 1% here, 0%, but actually, there's a little bit in there, right?
Yes.
That would include all the grants, or any grants that we get that are federal in nature, or?
For general fund.
General fund.
Yes. This doesn't cover any other funds, so.
Okay.
A lot of the other funds, like Health Department, G-Card, are, they're tracked in separate funds, but they have.
Which are heavily funded, at least G-Card, for sure, is heavily federally funded.
Yes.
Okay. I'm keeping an eye on the federal piece of it, given what's happening in Washington and, you know, concerns about not having funds for people who are in need here in the community, so. But that, I'll focus more on the other budgets, I suppose.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Mr. Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair, Crystal. In some of this, you're probably going to have to answer for me after the fact, because I don't know how far I can go, because during our negotiation for union contracts, we'd set a number, basically using half of what we thought our increase was going to be over those three years, out of general fund. You know the numbers we're talking about. I don't know how much, because we haven't settled all the union contracts right now, so I don't know how much I can say or speak on this, but I would like to have a conversation with you, because if I add this number up over three years, I'm a little short of what we used to come up with that number, then divide it in half.
Yeah, part of that discussion was based on the increase in property tax, and we had discussions where I'm like, you can do that, but if other things fluctuate, it will dip into your property tax revenue. So our tax revenue is projected to increase 3.6 million for '26. It was 3 million for '25, 4.2 million for 2024. But that last slide, I mean, we were losing some of those other revenues that are offsetting that increase in tax revenue.
Through the chair for me. I'm just going to, this week, if you have time sometime, would you just let me know, and I'd like to talk to you and discuss where we are with this, because I'm kind of a little nervous knowing what we've promised and what we actually have coming in. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? I just wanted to make a comment in relation to Commissioner Wayhill's comments. The staff, I know, tends, they're meeting on a regular basis and monitoring those grants that may change with the new administration, so we're, I know they're staying on top of it. You're doing that weekly, aren't you, Josh?
Not weekly, but now that the administration has released a budget, we're meeting tomorrow, actually, to go over what the impact, if that budget is adopted, what that impact would be for Genesee County in terms of employees, but also programs and services that are offered to residents. And I know that Commissioner Wayhill had asked for us to do a presentation, so I'll work with him to get that date. We initially talked about today, but with so much on the agenda, we didn't. But I think it's important for the board to have some testimony on what those potential impacts would be, so we can either do that next week or the following week.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Like I said, the staff is staying on top of that. Anybody else have any comments for Crystal?
I have a question. I have a question. I'm throwing a blank on a piece that has a general fund key revenue assumptions. I don't understand what's meant by revenue replacement from ARPA funding ending fiscal year 2025, a decrease of 1 million.
Yeah, we had 1 million of revenue replacement in fiscal year '25. We won't have that in the fiscal year 2026 budget, so it decreased from '25 to '26 by a million.
So are you saying that that million replaced, that million that we received was able to be used to replace a million that we lost from ARPA? Like, I don't understand.
Yeah, so part of the ARPA bucket, our $78 million, 10 million of it was called revenue replacement, which meant we could use it just for general government services.
Got it.
So we used 3 million each of the first three fiscal years, and then we used 1 million, the last million last fiscal year.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you so much.
Anybody else? Seeing none, thank you, Crystal.
Sure.
And just for the benefit of the youth commission here, this is something that we do every year about this time. The finance department comes forward to explain what they are expecting us to receive from various sources, so that we can start the budget process and how to divvy that up to pay for our activities. Moving on, we don't have any old business, new business. Resolution 25-1360. Go ahead.
Approval of a proposed amendment to the 2024-2025 appropriations resolution in the amount of 25,000 to provide for physical file storage and retrieval costs for the remainder of the 2025 fiscal year. The transfer from the general fund balance will be deposited into the account 1010-296.01-801.004.
I'll move it.
Support. Move it.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion for Resolution 25-1548.
I'll move it.
Forwarding to receive and file a copy of the paid county bills for the weeks ending in 3/25/2025, 3/30/2025, 4/06/2025, and 4/13/2025, in the total amount of 27,211, oh, 27,211,178 cents.
Ooh, it's a lot of money. Need a motion?
Yeah, you got a motion.
I moved it.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion for Resolution 25-1587.
Approval of the Kersley Creek Grandview Branch Drain Note in an amount not to exceed $205,000. The cost of this note will be paid by Special Assessments of the Drain District.
Go ahead.
Support.
Is there any discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion for Resolution 2025-1684.
Approval of a proposed budget amendment to 2024-2025 appropriations resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment request.
Move it with a question.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Shoemaker?
Through the chair, if we could have a little more explanation on this.
Crystal can come up and speak to it. These are just the periodic amendments that we send through to move items around. If there's ever any increase in general fund costs to be requested, then we have the departments request those separately. Is there a specific item listed there that?
No.
Or discussion?
No, no.
Okay.
Why don't you go through it, and then I see you guys sit in the back, so I want you to walk all the way to the front.
Are you through, Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes, I am.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Yeah, Mr. Lloyd?
Just the request, since we're going to be doing the individual ones separately, can we add, you know, add a little more detail going forward on the detail that's on the agenda, like it's from this department, and it's, this is why they're moving it?
I'm not, you know, I know you want more detail, but I'm not quite following exactly how.
Like, for instance, say, you know, whatever department says, say, I don't want to pick a, say Animal Control. Say Animal Control is requesting resources to be moved. Right now, we have it where we list it just as a budget amendment. Can we add to that for the agenda, say, hey, a request from Animal Control to move money to buy boxes, or whatever it is, like, like to this?
I'm sure, I'm sure we can.
We can sit down and talk to make sure we're meeting your needs on that, yes.
Okay, sure. Thanks.
So on these particular ones, the details in the memo, like, there's seven different things moving here. I don't know if there's enough room to put that in the description for the agenda?
Yeah.
We can meet with commissioners to get what they need done on it.
Sure.
And the detail we'll be discussing is more so for public knowledge, so that when they read it, they'll have, because I know we're doing something different here, but they'll know exactly what department, but we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion for Resolution 2025-1688.
Approval of a proposed amendment to the 2024-2025 appropriations resolution to provide for increased employee costs and travel costs. This amendment requests $32,000 in general fund balance to be allocated in the attached line items.
I'll move it.
Okay, is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion for Resolution 2025-1711.
Approval of a request by the Genesee County 911 Contisolim to increase the 911 surcharge to $3.
Move it.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions about this? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, I had to move my mic back. If I may.
Yeah.
As most of you know, and some of you may not, the city of Fenton has its own 911, which receives funding from this. Obviously, with the increase, and I've talked to Mr. Freeman about this several times, I think he's prepared Corporation Council for my question, I'm just wondering when we will take action to increase their portion of what we collect for, from the increase, from the $1.88 or whatever it was, to the $3.
Okay, my, my question to Mr. Shoemaker is, is that handled by us or the 911 to do that?
Let me just make sure I have your question straight. Are you asking about the portion of the increase in the surcharge? Because as I understand it, the 911 plan has a provision that determines how much the city of Fenton gets, and so, to the extent that there's an increase to $3, that should automatically be taken care of by the plan, that because they're getting a portion of it, they're going to get a portion of the increase.
If I may, to ask, continue the question. When I first got down here, this was tied up, and we had to pass something to give them the last increase. So that's why I'm questioning it now. And it's a very complex issue, I understand, from many aspects, but I just want, I want to make clear, I really don't believe that that's how it happens, and what you're telling me is that 911 is going to make sure that the city of Fenton receives their additional portion based on the resident count.
That's my understanding. The, the 911 plan that is in place specifies a distribution based on a percentage of the surcharge that is received. And so, the fact that we're taking in more, the city of Fenton should get the same percentage, but it will be a percentage of a greater overall pie.
Yeah, I just, like I said, where I'm confused is, we had to take action before to make sure that increase was distributed to the city of Fenton, and now you're telling it's going to automatically happen, so I don't want it to be delayed. So if we could, between now and the next meeting, maybe figure out if we do need to take action, or if it is actually something out of our hands and we let it go. I just, like I said, what's throwing me off is, if you, Marty, Mr. Kuzina, can remember when I first got down here, there's a few commissioners that held it up, because there's some issues with another commissioner, and when we got down here, we passed the resolution to free up that, those dollars.
Let's set up a call for Monday with you, me, and the Corporation Council, because I remember it the way that you're describing it. We'll all be on the same page by Wednesday.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and then if you have any further questions after you meet with them, you know, Commissioner Flohling and myself, we sit on the 911 consortium, so, you know, maybe we could ask a question too, if, but I'm sure they're going to come up with your answer. Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I need a motion for Resolution 2025-1736. Approval request to purchase, I'm sorry, I took over your spot.
No, it's okay.
I don't want to be pushy, you go ahead.
Approval of request to push IT equipment refresh order with Dell incorporation.
Move it.
Move it. Do we have support?
Support.
Okay, is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We don't have any other business. I now adjourn this committee at 7:00.
All right, Government Operations is called to order at 6:36 PM. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemakers?
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Flohelling?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
We have the approval of the minutes from April 16th, 2025-1722. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Moved, is there support? Moved and supported, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Do we have any public comment to this committee? Any public comment to governmental operations? One more time, any public comments? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Doesn't appear that we have any communications or old business. Under new business, we have Resolution 2025-0049.
Move it.
Approval to establish a budget for the purchase of search and rescue K-9, K-9 vehicles, upfitting and related K-9 training and supplies expense that, that will follow. The request is to establish expense line 2651-11.00-978000 in an amount of $41,000 to issue purchase orders to Northern Michigan K-9, $10,500, and Arrowhead Uffitters, $26,902, and to establish the following expense line, 2651-311.00-955.14 to cover the K-9 training and related supplies slash expenses from various vendors.
We have a motion, is there support?
Or?
All right, moved and supported. Do we have discussion? No discussion? All those up, Commissioner Shoemaker?
Is this, obviously, these, I see the funds 2651. What fund is that, again?
We have Captain Cronkite approaching, so identify yourselves.
Deputy Facken, who's going to actually, going to be the K-9 handler that we're going to be using. So question was, where's the funding?
What, one, what account it was coming from, and then I had a couple more, so I'm glad you're up here, so. Yeah, what fund is that coming from?
We do forfeiture fund?
Okay.
That's established in the money. No general fund dollars.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Through the chair, is this another dog we're adding, or do we lose, do we lose?
So yes, it is another dog that we're adding, but there's a two-year life expectancy of another dog that's going to be out of commission in the next two years, so this dog would be up and running and ready to go when that dog is taken out of service.
Because I remember this process is quite a
week with the sheriff's office, received some various concerns. We're working through those concerns, making some adjustments to the policy. It'll be coming back through our chair, back to the Board of Commissioners in the next week or so, give or take.
Do we have additional discussion? I'll just add that I think it was a very good meeting. Lots of good discussion. The undersheriff was there, Captain Murphy, Commissioner Shoemaker, myself, Commissioner Lloyd, our Corporation Council, Mr. Freeman, and the risk manager, who I see way in the back there, Katie. So, for those of the, those of you that are still alarmed by what's happening, because I keep getting emails and phone calls and texts about that we've implemented this already, that is not true. We're still trying to make sure that we know what we're voting on and what's going to come back to us. So remain calm, and we will have something in a couple of weeks. All right. Motion to postpone has been moved and supported. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-1547.
Approval of the Genesee County Volunteer Time Off Policy.
I move it.
It's been moved. Do we have support?
Support.
All right. We got support, two supports. Do we have discussion on the motion?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution 2025-1507. Approval of Genesee County, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Faith.
Approval of Genesee County's depth management policy.
Do we have a motion?
Move it.
Moved?
I'll support it for discussion.
Moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Lloyd.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that it is grant funded, but I'd like to have some additional detail about what this represents and, you know, the origins of it and such.
Could you repeat that? I was walking up.
Tell us about it. And good evening to you. Just, just curious. I know that it is grant funded.
Yeah.
So great to see resources coming into community, but just want some detail about the why and how this came about.
This started 11 years ago. We've been coming in front of this board for, I don't know if this is the 11th or 12th year, asking for approval for the memorandum of understanding that we have with the Attorney General's Office. It's under the state's distressed cities initiative grant funding. And that allows us to bring on board up to four special assistant attorney generals who serve as assistant prosecutors in Genesee County. They act and serve just like any other prosecutor in our office. We have one that's in our appellate division, one at, in the warrant unit, and Mike Thomas, former Saginaw County prosecutor for many decades. They are all retired. All, all three of our SAGs are retired, and we have room for one more. But frankly, the Attorney General on this grant does not pay enough. We can't recruit enough people who would come on board for that base salary, and it has no benefits. So it's hard to find somebody that is interested. And fortunately, we have two former Genesee County prosecutors, longstanding, long-term prosecutors who retired, and as I said, former Saginaw prosecutor, Mike Thomas, who worked with us. And they do a great job. They're very qualified and competent, and it costs the county nothing.
Former prosecutor attorney from Sag, from that area?
Yeah. Saginaw County's former elected prosecutor.
Wow.
Yeah. And Tim Cassidy, who some of you may know, and Janet McLaren. They're all working for us under the SAG program and doing a great job. And it's all paid for by the state.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we interview and hire them. So it's up to us, not the Attorney General, who we have on board.
Commissioner Kuzno.
Yeah, this is, I hate to say routine, but it's been going on every year since I've been here. My only question, John, is, is any of the present attorney, or I mean, your assistant prosecutors, have they been with us since the, the holy 11 years, or is it come and go, you know, every few years?
Mike Thomas has been with us throughout all those years. And, I'm not sure. I think all three of them may have been here from the start.
Okay.
Can't remember who else.
That was a, that was a test for mental acuity.
Yeah.
I'm just joking. You're younger than I am.
Yeah. So, we'd love to get a fourth, but it's hard to find, find somebody that's willing to come out of retirement and, and do this, so.
Thank you.
Do we have additional discussion? Commissioner Winfrey.
Yeah, John, would this help in any way alleviate an extra burden with the resentencing?
These SAGs?
Yes.
They are, their plate is full. They're, every day working on a whole stack of cases. And, you know, we've had this, we had the discussion a few weeks ago, how burdened our appellate division is. And they're the ones that would be primarily concerned with the caseload that we're going to be dealing with on that issue.
Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next one. Resolution 2025-1726.
Recognition of Migraine and Headache Awareness Month, June 2025.
Move it.
It's been moved. Is there support? Support with a question? If I could, normally I read these, so I'm going to read this one to you all. "To the Honorable Chairperson and members of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners, Genesee County, Michigan, ladies and gentlemen, whereas there are more than 300 medically recognized headache diseases, including cluster headaches and migraine; and whereas headache diseases impact one in six households in the United States, with more than 40 million Americans living with headache diseases; and whereas headache diseases are three to four times more prevalent in women and native indigenous communities, have the highest prevalence of disabling headaches in the United States; and whereas significant disparities in diagnosis, treatment, and outcomes persist, particularly affecting Black, Hispanic, and Native indigenous populations who face underdiagnosis and inadequate treatment; whereas it's estimated that 40 to 50% of people living with migraine disease are undiagnosed; and whereas migraine is the second-leading cause of global disability, and notably, one of the most disabling for young women under 50 years old; and whereas veterans returning from Iraq and Afghanistan have two to four times the incidence of migraine compared to the general population, likely due to traumatic brain injury; and post-traumatic headache occurs in up to 92% of military personnel who have sustained mild TBI, traumatic brain injury; and whereas headache diseases are an economic issue, costing US companies upwards of $78 billion each year in direct and indirect costs; whereas migraine disease impacts all systems of the body, are experienced on a spectrum, presenting significantly different levels of intensity, frequency, and disability, and with symptoms which can include intense pain, nausea, and vomiting, sensitivity to light, sound, smell, and touch, visual disturbances, tinnitus, tinnitus, I think is how you say it, chills, fatigue, anemic aphasia, trouble finding words, impaired cognitive function, numbness and weakness lasting for four to 72 hours on average; and whereas stigma and misinformation related to headache disease have stifled research and advances in treatment; and whereas all persons living with headache diseases deserve fair, equal, timely, and affordable access to new and innovative treatments to live their lives to their fullest potential. Now therefore be it resolved that this Board of County Commissioners of Genesee County, Michigan, does hereby proclaim June 2025 as Migraine and Headache Awareness Month." Commissioner Flouelling.
I'm all set, sir.
Okay.
Good.
Do we have additional discussion? Commissioner Kuzno.
I just didn't hear. Where's that resolution from? Who made it?
I, Commissioner Shoemaker, I think you.
I have a resident that, if you remember last year, we, I'm sorry, I don't want to be out of order. So if I may.
Go right, go right ahead. I just want to make sure you have the mic.
Yeah. Thank you. I have a resident, the last year, remember, we signed a laudatory. This is the same resident that asked. They have some family members that suffer from this and asked if we would bring awareness to it. And I thought, instead of just passing the laudatory, which just sits in our office, this would be a better way to show that this is an issue going on in our, you know, in our county and in our state and throughout the country. And as someone with family members that have suffered from migraines like this, to the point where they're vomiting and throwing up, on top of it, I thought it was a good thing to bring awareness to.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Commissioner? Okay. Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next one. Resolution 2025-1726.
Recognition of Migraine and Headache Awareness Month, June 2025.
It's been moved. Is there support? Support with a question? If I could, normally I read these, so I'm going to read this one to you all. "To the Honorable Chairperson and members of the Genesee County Board of Commissioners, Genesee County, Michigan, ladies and gentlemen, whereas there are more than 300 medically recognized headache diseases, including cluster headaches and migraine; and whereas headache diseases impact one in six households in the United States, with more than 40 million Americans living with headache diseases; and whereas headache diseases are three to four times more prevalent in women and native indigenous communities, have the highest prevalence of disabling headaches in the United States; and whereas significant disparities in diagnosis, treatment, and outcomes persist, particularly affecting Black, Hispanic, and Native indigenous populations who face underdiagnosis and inadequate treatment; whereas it's estimated that 40 to 50% of people living with migraine disease are undiagnosed; and whereas migraine is the second-leading cause of global disability, and notably, one of the most disabling for young women under 50 years old; and whereas veterans returning from Iraq and Afghanistan have two to four times the incidence of migraine compared to the general population, likely due to traumatic brain injury; and post-traumatic headache occurs in up to 92% of military personnel who have sustained mild TBI, traumatic brain injury; and whereas headache diseases are an economic issue, costing US companies upwards of $78 billion each year in direct and indirect costs; whereas migraine disease impacts all systems of the body, are experienced on a spectrum, presenting significantly different levels of intensity, frequency, and disability, and with symptoms which can include intense pain, nausea, and vomiting, sensitivity to light, sound, smell, and touch, visual disturbances, tinnitus, tinnitus, I think is how you say it, chills, fatigue, anemic aphasia, trouble finding words, impaired cognitive function, numbness and weakness lasting for four to 72 hours on average; and whereas stigma and misinformation related to headache disease have stifled research and advances in treatment; and whereas all persons living with headache diseases deserve fair, equal, timely, and affordable access to new and innovative treatments to live their lives to their fullest potential. Now therefore be it resolved that this Board of County Commissioners of Genesee County, Michigan, does hereby proclaim June 2025 as Migraine and Headache Awareness Month." Commissioner Flouelling.
I'm all set, sir.
Okay.
Good.
Do we have additional discussion? Commissioner Kuzno.
I just didn't hear. Where's that resolution from? Who made it?
I, Commissioner Shoemaker, I think you.
I have a resident that, if you remember last year, we, I'm sorry, I don't want to be out of order. So if I may.
Go right, go right ahead. I just want to make sure you have the mic.
Yeah. Thank you. I have a resident, the last year, remember, we signed a laudatory. This is the same resident that asked. They have some family members that suffer from this and asked if we would bring awareness to it. And I thought, instead of just passing the laudatory, which just sits in our office, this would be a better way to show that this is an issue going on in our, you know, in our county and in our state and throughout the country. And as someone with family members that have suffered from migraines like this, to the point where they're vomiting and throwing up, on top of it, I thought it was a good thing to bring awareness to.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Commissioner? Okay. Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Do we have additional discussion?
I just didn't hear. Where's that resolution from? Who made it?
I, Commissioner Shoemaker, I think you.
I have a resident that, if you remember last year, we, I'm sorry, I don't want to be out of order. So if I may.
Go right, go right ahead. I just want to make sure you have the mic.
Yeah. Thank you. I have a resident, the last year, remember, we signed a laudatory. This is the same resident that asked. They have some family members that suffer from this and asked if we would bring awareness to it. And I thought, instead of just passing the laudatory, which just sits in our office, this would be a better way to show that this is an issue going on in our, you know, in our county and in our state and throughout the country. And as someone with family members that have suffered from migraines like this, to the point where they're vomiting and throwing up, on top of it, I thought it was a good thing to bring awareness to.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Commissioner? Okay. Do we have additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion is carried. I believe that is it. Let me just mention something I was going to say under the Finance Committee, because I think that's where this topic originated a year and a half ago. I had the pleasure of being out at the Flushing Senior Center for my quarterly coffee, and they were very proud to walk me around after the coffee ended to show me the improvements to the senior center that the $100,000 that this commission approved, I think, a year and a half ago, did for them. New floors, paint, bathroom improvements. So just wanted to mention that under the Finance Committee, which I failed to do. You know, other centers are doing other things, but it seems like it's, it's making a difference in people's lives. So again, thank you to Derek and his staff for facilitating that work. All right. This meeting is adjourned at 6:53.
Thank you. And youth commissioners, I know some youth commissioners.
A Human Services Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger?
Here.
Commissioner Kuzno?
Here.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present. It's time we entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move.
Support?
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Are there any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Public comments are now closed. Communications, we do have a presentation from Colonel Britton. Your floor.
All right. Good evening, commissioners and youth commissioners. Derek Britton, Director of Veteran Services, just wanted to provide some education and maybe some possibilities for Genesee County veterans. So, next slide. It's going to be, oh, where is it? Right here? Gotcha. Okay. All right. So, going to be talking to you this evening about Michigan Veteran Homes or State Veteran Homes. And pretty much the bottom line upfront is that there are three Michigan Veteran Homes in the state of Michigan. The state is looking to expand their footprint of these homes. One of the areas mentioned in their strategic plan that I reviewed is the Flint-Saginaw-Bay City region. They're talking about building another home in, in, in that region. They haven't chose the place yet, but I just wanted to bring it to the commission to say, you know, if this is a possibility for us to have one in Genesee County. Okay. So, just a little background on what these homes are. So, State Veteran Homes, they are essentially facilities that provide nursing home care, adult daycare, domiciliary care for veterans. These homes are owned and operated by the state rather than the Department of Veteran Services. They date back to, you know, post-Civil War era. Individual states created these homes in the aftermath of that conflict. Their mission is to help homeless and disabled veterans. That mission has changed, of course, until the current day, what they represent now. While the basic oversight and the day-to-day operation of these homes is not the responsibility of the VA, the VA has a vetting process that each state has to go through in order to qualify under VA standards for these homes. The Department of Veteran Affairs, they do a survey on a yearly basis to assure that these homes are in VA regulations. So the benefits of these homes, basically, it's tailored environment for, you know, the veteran population, and there's a financial benefit, no cost or lower-cost care for, for veterans in these homes. This is one of the largest long-term care providers in the country. Over 150 beds in all states and Puerto Rico, over, I'm sorry, 150 homes and over 30,000 beds for veterans and dependents. So, a breakdown of the funding that they receive. So there's VA per diem funding, and basically with VA per diem, it's, certain veterans are eligible for that per diem, depending on their classification, you know, their service connection. And the VA will pay towards their care indefinitely. In the state of Michigan, the full per diem rate for veterans that qualify is, averages about $430 a day. And then there's basic per diem for other honorably discharged veterans. That's about $118 a day. Of course, you've got private pay, there's state funding, and then there's also federal funding from Medicare and Medicaid. So, in Michigan, Michigan Veteran Homes, each state has their own structure, how they, you know, govern these. you know, govern these homes. Our state has what's called the Michigan Veterans Facility Authority. This was created by act in twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen. The Michigan Veterans Homes, it's one agency which is under the Michigan Veterans Affairs Department, Department of Michigan Veterans Affairs. The homes themselves, they're governed by centralized leadership. They oversee the home operations, so they have administrators and staff who are, you know, skilled in long-term care, nursing experience, and things like that. This is the current board. It's a ten-member board, and one of the members on the board is the Director of Veterans Affairs, Mr. Brian Love. They are appointed by the governor for a four-year term. So a little bit about the homes that we have here in Michigan, there are three homes. There's the home in Grand Rapids, and there's a home in Marquette, and there's a home in the most recent home in Chesterfield Township. And I'll just, you know, give you a little overview of each of those homes. So the first home in Grand Rapids, this was the very first home that we had here in Michigan and opened in eighteen eighty-six. This is one of those, again, post-Civil War homes that opened. They actually have a cemetery, a Civil War cemetery connected to their home. It's recently had a renovation, and all of these homes are going to be more modernized than what they were in the past. So that's Grand Rapids. The home in the UP, Marquette, this home, it's currently housed in what used to be a hospital. So you could probably imagine, you know, the dynamics, what that looks like for veterans who live there. But they're going to be, they're on the docket to get the new, updated, modernized home here pretty soon. And then finally, our most recent home opened in twenty twenty-one in Chesterfield Township. It's located close to Selfridge Air Force Base. And again, this is the most recent home that was opened. It's very modern and a nice living environment for veterans. So again, I talked about the modernization, what they're looking at, the type of model they're looking at, a home-like design, single-story structure, community center with the, you know, barber shop, gym, you know, all the amenities. They are looking at sixteen-member households with a living room den, things like that, for food prepared in the household tailored to their, you know, taste. And the members have private rooms and their own bathrooms and things like that. So they're looking to modernize. So just to look ahead, there are currently approximately sixty thousand veterans in the state of Michigan. Estimated that two hundred fifty thousand of those will going to be needing long-term care in the next seven years. So of course, you know, the vast majority of these veterans, they're going to be, you know, receiving care, family members, other care providers. But the Michigan Veterans Affairs, the Facility Authority, they're looking to expand, like I mentioned earlier, to directly serve, you know, our veterans in the future. So what that expansion looks like, they have a strategic plan. Again, like I said, I kind of reviewed it and, you know, saw that, you know, the areas that they were looking at expanding. So I was like, wow, let me bring this to the Board of Commissioners to talk about. So they want to ensure that ninety-five percent of Michigan veterans have access to high-quality, veteran-focused, long-term care within seventy-five miles of their home. And the goal is, you know, again, to expand. So they have this criteria that they put out in regards to, you know, what that looks like when they choose a site. As you can see there, you know, they talk about the density of the veteran population, the likelihood that the veteran is going to choose, you know, to live in those homes, the community, you know, what it looks like, the amenities, things like that, transportation, et cetera. So so once they narrow down these communities, they're going to partner with state real estate division as well as local government, such as Board of Commissioners, to identify potential sites. So they're looking at sites that have, you know, the availability for future expansion, access to utilities, the neighborhood character, vehicular access, safety and security, things like that. So again, I mentioned that, you know, they're looking to expand. This was directly from their strategic plan. The fourth home they want to open is going to be in either Wayne County or Flint-Saginaw region. And in their plan, they're saying twenty twenty-seven. And they're going to open up a fifth home, and again, it's going to be either Flint or Wayne County. So so they're going to use, they want to use philanthropic support to help to, you know, build these homes. So this is just a video of, again, the most recent home, McComb County, Chesterfield Township, just a short video that talks about their opening of this facility.
Hello, everyone. Mark Hapken, McComb County Executive. You know, we're excited and very proud of the fact that we've been able to open up a facility here for our veterans. And again, it's a long-term care housing facility for veterans that have been in our military. And we were selected as a site a few years back to go ahead and create this facility, but a lot of work went into this on behalf of our planning department here in McComb County, working alongside of Chesterfield Township, the supervisor Dan Akavetti, as well as the state of Michigan. And so now knowing that we're able to open this facility and open the doors for those that want to make McComb their home in this veterans' housing site is an incredible testament to McComb County folks that really do care about our veterans. If you think about it, we have a rich history of making things that protect those who protect us with our defense industry, but also here in McComb County with their veterans' village as well as this facility here. I think it's pretty well-known that in McComb County, we are now serving those who have served us because we do care about those who have cared for us. So again, congratulations to all the participants in helping make this happen and make it a reality, and we couldn't be prouder of having this veterans' housing facility here in McComb County.
Okay, so again, looking ahead, once the Michigan Veterans Homes narrow down their communities, it's going to partner with state real estate division and local government and real estate professionals to identify potential sites. So, you know, my question, you know, and challenge for us is, you know, what can we do as Genesee County to be selected as a potential site for one of these Michigan Veteran Homes? I did reach out to the Michigan Veterans Homes Authority and, you know, just asked that question myself. And to date, their answer, basically to date, you know, they've invested in, you know, the Grand Rapids home improvement there, redoing the UP home, and then the new home in Chesterfield Township, of course. And they said that a further investment in the state budget for construction on a new future facility, it hasn't been made yet. Thus, you know, they don't know what future, you know, timelines look like. A lot of this is reliant on, you know, the VA and their federal grant program for a home construction. This funds about sixty-five percent of the construction costs. So so yeah, there's nothing, you know, in the plans in the works right now, but they have a strategic plan that they want to expand. So I put up the cost there of the most recent home in Chesterfield Township, seventy-six point five million dollars, forty-six point one from the VA construction grant, and then the rest comes from state local funds, thirty point four million. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Genesee County veterans and advocate for them, and maybe we can look forward to having one of these homes in our county. Opened, any questions?
Thank you, Colonel. Any questions? Commissioner Kuzina. Yeah, Colonel, I'm very impressed with this, your presentation with this program. And throughout the years, I've never had anybody that I can remember come forward and present this idea to do something like this. So kudos to you for pushing this. But what do we, what can we do to help you? Is, I guess, you know, you put that up there, but what in particular do you think this board can do to help you make this a reality in the future?
Good question. I'd say it's above my pay grade. As far as, you know, the next steps, I guess it'd be reaching out to, you know, that authority and, you know, putting forth maybe a plan that, you know, or a location that we can come up with that, you know, where we think one of these homes would be good, you know, in our county. So-
What do you think would be helpful if each and every one of us reach out to our state reps and senators? Because this, the county is represented by a lot of people and from two different political parties. But if this board collectively goes to those people, I think would be beneficial. Maybe that's something we can do at some point in time in the future.
Sure.
Coordinating it through your department to do something like that.
Absolutely. That would help. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Lloyd?
I'd like to build on that even more to maybe, you know, great presentation, maybe even, you know, encourage you, working with like parks and different departments here, like to maybe determine like what areas would be a great place for veterans, you know, for a home and other details. And then maybe come back with like, because I think we probably need to put together some kind of formal proposal from us that we all can take to our electeds, you know, as Commissioner Kuzina said, where we all kind of singing the same song, hey, we got location, we have, you know, all of the details that we can begin to start sharing congressional leaders and such. I think this is great. When I was here specifically at the UAW, we partner with the Veterans Home in Grand Rapids a lot. You know, we bought, you know, purchased a number of vehicles for them there, contributed toward housing projects and other things for the veterans. And to have something like this in Genesee County, I think it would be huge. Twenty-four thousand people. Now, there was a number in your study where you said that there's about, it was a huge number, like six hundred thousand veterans who will need care or something. What was that number?
Two hundred fifty thousand. That's six hundred thousand is the amount of veterans, total veterans.
Okay, the two hundred and fifty thousand, a number which is, which is a huge number, and that's concerning as well. But thanks a lot. You know, if you all can maybe work together with parks or whoever to figure out, hey, where would a space be good, and then maybe put together like, you know, some kind of something, something, you know, formal, then maybe we can take it from there.
And I think having something formal would put us ahead of, you know, maybe other areas that they're considering, Saginaw or Bay City or anything like that, so.
And then we also have our lobbyists too. Don't we still have a lobbyist? Then we have our lobbyists too. This could be another one of those projects that we have them advocate for, so thanks.
Any further questions? Commissioner, where you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not on the committee, but I had a curiosity. It looks like there's a local component in terms of dollars that needs to be brought to the table. Do you have any idea whether that came from the local government or uncertain?
I'm uncertain.
Okay. We do have a home program that we adopted, but I don't know if any of those funds would be eligible for something like this or not. It's more of a Derek Bradshaw question, probably, but anyway, I'll say that I'm interested in it. And, you know, obviously, depending on the financing piece and how the local match is composed, we have to make some decisions based on that. But I'm pleased with the fact that you brought it to us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Right?
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, no old business, new business, Resolution twenty twenty-five one three three nine. Move it.
Approval of agreement between Genesee County and the Greater Flint Health Coalition in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand to provide Medicare outreach services on behalf of Genesee County. The cost of this agreement will be paid from account two two one zero dash six one three point zero zero dash eight zero one point zero zero one.
Pours your pleasure. Move it.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Resolution two zero two five one five five two.
Approval of an amendment to a contract between Genesee County and the Valley Area on Aging in an amount of one hundred eight thousand nine hundred dollars to provide for additional senior meals. The budget for this amendment to attach-
So moved.
Is attached.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-five one five eight three.
Approval of agreement between Genesee County, Genesee Area Focus Fund, and the Genesee Chambers Foundation to provide summer employment opportunities to youth. This grant funding program will provide employment for fifteen youth.
So moved.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Kuzina?
Just out of curiosity, where's the grant come from?
Ms. Coleman.
Evening Commissioners and young commissioners of our future. This is Genesee Area Focus Fund, excuse me, and the Chamber Foundation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? These are youth quests, youth, is that correct?
That's the teen quest.
Teen quest, yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, hear none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it. Thank you, Mrs. Coleman. Okay, there's no other business before this committee. We stand adjourned.
Call the Public Works Committee meeting to order at seven sixteen. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fluehling?
Present.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
You? Approval of minutes? Resolution twenty twenty-five seventeen twenty-four?
Support.
Any discussion? Any none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment to the committee? Public comment to the committee? Last call, public comment to the committee. Public comments closed. No communications, no old business. Resolution twenty twenty-five twelve seventy-five will open the Genesee County Road Commission discussion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to postpone this to the next Public Works Committee. There are a few members of this committee that are not present, and we just received another opinion, an additional opinion from our corporate counsel. I'd like to have some time for the board to digest that prior to we have a discussion. I think we received it today, so my motion is to postpone it to the next committee.
We have a motion to postpone Resolution twenty twenty-five twelve seventy-five until the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five Public Works Committee meeting. Any support?
Support.
Motion in support. Any discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker?
Yeah, we just have one member missing, and this would just be to move it to the full board, so next week we could have full discussion, everybody could review it. I just don't understand the, I understand we got new information that kind of contradicts what we'd heard before as far as from corporation counsel, but if, you know, this has been dragging on for a couple months now. It seems like to me this resolution's been floating out here discussing. I was gone at one point when you guys discussed it, and then that was months ago, so I just don't understand if it's going to be there next week, we have time to review it.
We can proceed with discussion.
You know, I just don't understand why we're, why we postpone it. Because it's just one individual here, and we're just moved to full board. She'll be here next week, I'm assuming. I mean-
So I don't have a problem moving it to the full board. We can discuss it- So, I don't have a problem moving it to the full board, we can discuss it tonight, we can, because it is a discussion item, we can discuss it tonight or we can discuss it next week. I don't, I don't have a preference other than just want to give everybody an opportunity to digest, but we can discuss it now.
If I, if I, if it's a discussion item, is it something that we're going to discuss twice? Because it's on this agenda the next week?
Well, we don't have any action item currently under this, it's just discussion.
So, that's what I'm wondering, so if we are happy with the discussion night, it wouldn't move forward then?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can move it and discuss it at the full board meeting and the full board be a part of it, because really it's a discussion item, but it's down here as a resolution. We could vote to move it to the full board and have a discussion at that point if we want to, either way, I'm good, so whatever, whatever makes you comfortable.
I, like I said, I'm, I have my opinions on this.
Yeah, that's why we need.
And so, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I was saying that's why it's good to have a discussion, because I know that there's differences in opinions and such, but go ahead, my apologies.
I would, like I said, I, I'd like, if we agree it doesn't need to move any further than this, does it need to go to the full board afterwards?
Well, so the resolution numbers attached to it, but there's, it's just a discussion item, so there's no action item currently under this resolution, so it's just a discussion.
Yeah, let's, let's just discuss it. Okay, that way we don't, we don't, so I'm gonna withdraw my motion and we can just have a discussion.
Okay.
All right. So, so you wanna, because I know it was a request originally from Commissioner Winfrey and then.
Yeah, and I had made the request in light of not just one complaint, but several complaints that have come to me, I don't know about the other Commissioners regarding incidents of racial discrimination in their employment and hiring practices and the lack of equal opportunity and promotional opportunities. So I had asked this Board of Commissioners to conduct an impartial investigation into the personnel practices of the Road Commission, at which time I think we referred it to Corporate Counsel, you know, to get an opinion as to whether or not we could conduct such an investigation. And that's where we left it.
And then we did receive an opinion and then that opinion was adjusted, I'll say, today, and we just received that this afternoon.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Which, which in my opinion, you know, of course, we have the authority to remove appointees, any appointee that we appoint to any board or commission, and in that light we have authority to, you know, to do fact finding in order to make that removal.
I guess I would ask, since this is the discussion, who are we looking to remove? The whole board?
No, not necessarily the entire board, but those Commissioners that might be engaged in those kind of nefarious practices.
And it's my understanding that most of these complaints originated 2018, 2019?
Uh, no.
Under a previous board?
No, I think they're ongoing complaints.
Okay. Shoemaker?
I was gonna say, I've been down here for six years now and I've had this discussion with a lot of people over, you can only cry things so much and then guess what? They lose their validity. We've, they've been to court, these court cases have been won by the Road Commission, there's only one that I know of that there was actually lost and it was a.
ADA.
It just, it was, yeah, it was a disability case. We've done our own investigation two years ago into allegations as this board, the Chair and I, and I can't think who else sat on that with us, but we actually went through this process. I, as someone who's been said, had rotten things said about him, been called, that I'm a racist down here and several other things over the years, I've kind of find it disturbing that we don't let the courts take care of this. We think is irrelevant, she's, this individual's been to court again and again and these cases they've lost. I also am a little upset because we've lost two Road Commissioners in the last few years. For my districts, they are very happy with them, they did a great job. Lawsuits were brought against them, they were, they were found not guilty, but we have not yet once to listen to hear their side of things if we really want to be involved with the Road Commission and be involved with what's going on over there, why they left. I don't know how many of you reached out to them, I have. You can only take so many attacks on your character, we choose it because we are electeds. These are employees still that take these attacks, these are political attacks. I believe that that board has been replaced since most of these issues are there, number one. Two, I think they're operating in the best interest of what they view as healthy for the county as far as roads. They have hired their own counsel that when there is a complaint, to look into it, to investigate it. The problem is, is the counsel they've hired said there's nothing wrong, so this individual does not like that answer, because guess what, it doesn't fit your need of the scenario you've created, and now they want us to get involved. Which, we want to go after Road Commissioners and look into supposedly what they're doing, because we've already ran the Road Commissioner out, so is that what we're trying to do now is vilify a bunch of people who work on that board? I just, I, I'm very upset by it, plus we got Corporation Counsel that gave us one recommendation that said, guess what, it's not our place to do that, and then today we get a separate one saying, well, we kind of have an obligation. Seems kind of political to me because there's several people that want this to go down a certain road. I would like to know why the change of opinion from our previous, the previous information our Corporation Counsel gave us to today, what we received, what, what changed from there, I think that would be very helpful, but like I said, I, I just don't understand why we don't let the courts take care of this, and they have. Do we think we're going to hire somebody better than a judge to oversee this or figure out whether it's fair or unfair? Plus the dollar amounts we're going to spend, and this continues to go on. And, you know, I, I just, like I said, I was very upset when I heard the things that certain Road Commissioners went through, what was said about them, I was, I'm upset when I, not, and I mean when I say Commissioner, I mean the Road Commissioner, the Director, I'm sorry, thank you, Josh. And now we're going after the Road Commissioners. So I, I just, you know, and eventually things lose their validity, because I've sat down here and I've been sat right there, been called all kinds of rotten names, and I know my heart what's true and what's not, but on top of it, let's look at it from the legal side, we had Corporation Counsel give us one opinion and now it's changed, let's just start there, do we have the, we can do it as far as the second opinion, but, or we should ethically or however you want to put it, but before we shouldn't, so if we could have clarification on that, and I'll yield for now, because till I hear what the answer is. If that made any sense.
You're looking for clarification on the change of opinion?
So, I'd like to get in on this as part of board discussion and then we can get clarification, just a couple of things. You know, it's, it's, you know, the, the Road Commission, what's happened at the Road Commission, what's happened with the Board of the Road Commission, what's happened with the County Board of Commissioners, I mean dating back to even before I was appointed to this body and after the fact, a, a matter of governance and responsibility at the various levels, whether at the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Road Commissioners level, or even at the staffing level, there's so much that has transpired that this has moved away from a, just a simple matter of, is there proper governance, are folks acting appropriately in their official capacities, are laws being followed, it's shifted away from that and it's become a, a, a major political debate, a major political, it's really become political chaos and confusion, in my opinion. And, and I've said this before and I'll say it tonight, you know, there's so much emotions, I mean, you know, you talk about Commissioner Shoemaker, this is an indictment, but we're having a discussion about a Commissioner being removed for, you know, reasons that you stated, which I'm not aware of that, but if you say it, you know, I trust you, I believe it to be true, but there's also two Commissioners that were taken off of that Board who were Commissioners when we did our inquiry, who were the only members of the Road Commission that actually spoke up then on, during our inquiry and say, yes, there are variant concerns. So when we did the inquiry just for public and everybody's sentiment, we did do that inquiry, but you know, because we did it and we were very fair, you and I were very fair in the questions we asked and that kind of thing, and we did a great job, we both agreed. But when we did that, it was so many components, we said, listen, we're not going to ask questions of employees of the Road Commission except the executive direct, executive manager or the managing director, but we'll just talk to Board members. Why? Because we believed at that time that they were our responsibility, because we appoint those individuals, and so we did an inquiry over a year ago and we only asked questions of Board members and then the, the managing director only, we didn't go outside of that, so we didn't go into, you know, employees, who did what, so on and so forth, we just asked those questions and we asked them what they thought was happening. There were no leading questions, we did feed them a narrative, and what we got was, you had out of five people we talked to, Board members, or four maybe, two said, life is good, it's a beautiful day, you know, everybody else is a problem, and then you had two that came in, one of which said, there are major issues here, the other guy came in and said, well, maybe it's not as extreme as he says, but certainly there are issues here, and then we brought in the managing director, and although in his comments, he didn't confirm one thing, it was clear to us, on the other hand, that there was some concerns. Before that inquiry we did, the previous Board of Commissioners did an inquiry as well, and that didn't really go anywhere, because the truth be told, and we all know it's the truth, those that were around, that became a major political piece, you know, where we have people from different, you know, townships weighing in on who they think should be on the Board, and I'm getting calls too, so we know that this has been a major political piece. What I'm suggesting is that we take the emotions out of it, we take the politics out of it for once, and we then say, we just want to make sure that everybody's doing their job, everybody's acting appropriately, and there are no laws that are being broken. So, so that's, that's where I am and that's where I think an inquiry comes in, and if they are, you know, if everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, it's no concern, people will participate and the truth will come out in the wash and we'll have that information. If there are issues, then that'll come out in the wash, and then as a Board of Commissioners, we have a responsibility, because we delegated that authority to them, we have a responsibility to make sure it's running right. Let's talk about the lawsuits. There's been more than one case that has been adjudicated in the Eastern District Courts in Detroit, so out of this area, courts that have been predominantly jurors of Caucasian descent, I'm only referencing that because these are African Americans that have filed these lawsuits and have gone to trial, that's the only reason I'm bringing up race, but here's my point. You've had judges and you've had juries for two individuals who worked in the same position, both for retaliation and for ADA, one of them, so it's not just ADA, it's retaliation. They went to court and said, went to trial, and the jury came back and the judges saying that employees of the Road Commission retaliated against employees, they, they, they went to court. So even despite the politics of the moment and who likes who and who's with who or whatever, I really don't even care about that, what we do know as a Board of Commissioners is there's been at least two lawsuits where there's been retaliation. So somebody at the Road Commission did that, so as a Board Member, I'm just speaking for Del Rico and I digress and come back, because there's more I want to say in this discussion, my concern as a Board Commissioner, forget the politics, I want to know that, and I feel like it's our responsibility to know, that the Road Commission, all of them as a group, not people you like or people I like, every last one of them, I believe they have a responsibility as the Road Commission, just as we would do if one of our department heads retaliated. We would get to the bottom of it, we will hold people accountable, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, I like to know if that happened. So I just want to bring it back and just say that we can eliminate the politics of all of this by just having folks make sure our people have done their job, and that, and that's what this is, is, is about. So I'll digress and come back, but I did want to talk about the cases, there was more than one cases, two cases retaliation that we lost. The taxpayers and insurance, they're going to pay nearly a million dollars for one case that was lost, nobody presented it to us, but it's a fact, and that Road Commissioners have been removed on both sides of this for whatever reasons, you know, we didn't put them back on, so I'll digress.
I'll go to Commissioner Shoemaker, but first I just want to make it clear, one of those cases is still under an active appeal, so that process is still ongoing, and it is, an attorney's opinion has been given that we are not on the hook for that 800,000 or million dollars. Road Commission is a separate legal entity that can sue and be sued, and if they do lose that litigation, either themselves or their insurance pool, Michigan Road Commission Insurance Pool will pay that, that settlement out, so it's not on the taxpayers to pay that.
Point of, one point of information, would you say, and, and I wasn't aware that one is under appeal, but even if that's the case, it doesn't change that, I'm just, just a point of information for public, it doesn't change that a unbiased jury ruled that there was retaliation in that case.
Sure.
And the judge in the Eastern District issued a, issued a, an order of what that, you know.
Sure, they found him liable.
What's the word I'm looking for? Judgment, they issued a judgment, so now they're appealing it, but they've already been found guilty.
And I'm not going to argue the facts of the case, but I just will say that's why we have an appeals process, that's why we have a justice system that.
I agree.
There is recourse.
Yep, I agree.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Well, a couple of points of clarity, you mentioned Commissioner, our Chair, Commissioner Lloyd had mentioned the inquiry, the inquiry and talked about Commissioners and their complaints, the inquiry is about the Director, their complaints are about what's going on the Director. We're talking about Road Commissioners now, so are they complaining about themselves? Is that what they were doing? No, they were complaining about certain things they thought with the Director, and if it was so heinous and serious, why did we drop the issue? Why did we drop it? Because I don't remember being that serious, that's why we didn't continue further with it, because if it was that bad, we should have dropped it. And again, I'm, you know, these are just things with the past, I want to bring up about that past investigation we went through. On top of it, you know, I'd like to see, you know, a little, understand a little more about these cases, and we have some, we have some accountability here then too as Commissioners. As far as, we haven't asked them to come down and speak publicly in front of us, we asked, we have asked none of that if we did have problems in the past, we haven't told them, we have, some people have some issues with the way certain things as far as funding and other things are done, but what guidance have we given these Commissioners? You know, years ago, we took away a process to interview them so they, they understood what our goal was as Commissioners, and we still haven't implemented that process 100% back with the last way we appointed the last one, because we don't do an interview to discuss where we want to be, you can do an individual interview, but guess what, we all have different opinions where we want to go. So we, we do have some, but eventually, it, it looks like when you're standing outside of there, because this latest claim is not retaliatory, it's once again a racism claim as Mr. Winfrey has stated, we have not lost any of those cases. And now we gotta decide, ran off two Directors? How many people we want to run off? You know, and like I said, I'm waiting for the attorneys, our attorneys. You know, and, and like I said, I'm waiting for the attorneys, our attorney's opinions to see where we are. But, um, like I said, I, I want to clarify. If it was that bad last time when we did, you and I went through it, why didn't we do more? Because I don't remember it being that bad. I remember a few little statements. One of the gentleman who made those statements is gone. So like I said, I, I just don't know why you didn't do anything then if it's that bad. Because I don't remember it being that bad.
Commissioner Kuzno.
Ooh, I think if I'm understanding this right, there hasn't been any complaints about the road commissioners, just, uh, director and management. Am I correct in that?
I, I beg to differ with that. Actually, there are two instances where equal opportunity was denied. One was when Mr. Pavanti retired and they appointed his successor without an open process. And secondly, when he retired, they appointed the current managing director without an open process. Which denies opportunity to anyone else, uh, you know, to seek those, that, that position.
I understand that and I know that happened. But I guess my question really is, Commissioner, is has there been any formal complaint in writing that I can look at from anybody to a road commissioner?
I can, I can answer that question. I, I can't, I can't think back over the last year and a half. I know that the full board received the communication recently. Uh, because I know this is public, I'm not going, you know. There's a, um, complaint that we received by email that alleges, you know, misconduct or concerns about road commission, but then complaints about road commissioners and maybe how they've handled those complaints. So in that, there is a complaint against, uh, road commissioners to your question.
All right, well, let me just follow through with my thought. If there is, then, you know, we can, it's my understanding of the Corporation Counsel, that the only authority we have is to investigate that particular one or multiple, uh, road commissioners. And then there's a due process to do that. Uh, that's the only authority we have. We don't have, do we have response? There's a difference between authority and responsibility. From an authority, we don't have any authority. We don't, there's nothing we can do. I know that you as Chair, and I've known this before, you can subpoena people. But there's got to be a legal precedent or a legal process before you do that. Uh, I guess my frustration is that, you know, we get these complaints up and down forever. And it's only, in my, I don't know, I keep using 10 years, it hasn't been that long. But, uh, these problems just keep escalating, escalating, escalating. And, uh, you know, I've, uh, been involved with appointing a number of road commissioners. And I've had a certain logic of why I do what I do when I vote for one of them. And I, I don't always win that vote, but you know what I'm saying? Uh, that's the only responsibility that we've legally have. under this form of a road commission. So I guess what I'm leading up to also is, is there's other forms of a road commission. And those, it's no secret, you know, I'm looking at. And I've talked to a number of my colleagues here. And I've talked to a lot of other people in the community about that. So the only thing in my view that we can do to give us authority to oversee the road commission, because we really don't now, and we don't have any authority to do so. Uh, and to remove a road commissioner is difficult, because we started that process at one point in time, then COVID come along and so I just dropped it. But I guess, I mean, if there's individuals, you, you probably have the right to go talk to them. But the authority for any committee of us to go over and talk to people at will, we don't have any.
I'll go to Commissioner Lloyd. I just have one question for the group to consider. If an employee, if a department head of Genesee County has a complaint against the Board of Commissioners or a commissioner, what do they do? Where do they go? Where do they take it? If a department head at the road commission has a complaint against the road commissioners, they have a process laid out what to do. It was entered into their personnel policy manual, March 20th. Do we have one? Would they do anything different than taking it to the Chairman of the Board? And the Chairman of the Board hires a third party attorney that looks into the issue that the HR or Public Works, uh, Parks Manager is, Department Head is taking issue with. We would hire that third party to investigate ourselves, so.
Well, actually, you know, to be honest with you, Commissioner, so we've got rid of a few directors in the past by not doing that process.
What, what I'm saying is, do we have that process? That, would that be the process? Do we have that process?
It could be if it was contentious.
In policy.
But usually, you know, when I've been involved with, with releasing people, there's just been, uh, a general consensus.
What, what I'm saying is.
To get them, to encourage them to move.
The Parks Director has a complaint against one of us or the board itself. What's, what's their relief? Who do they take it to?
There, there is nobody. There is nobody, it's us.
So in essence, we'd be investigating ourselves? It, I just.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. I'm not arguing with you. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, yeah.
Sure.
They, they don't have any rights to do that. They can make a complaint. I mean, there's probably directors out there that don't like me. You know, I, I, I find it hard to believe. Uh, but, uh, you know, come and, you know. And so what are they going to do? Come and talk to five other commissioners and say, fire Kuzno?
Well, then.
No, they can't.
Are we affording employment rights to organizations that we don't have control over?
Pardon?
Are, are we looking at affording employment rights to separate legal entities that we don't have control over? Because our own employees, we don't afford them that, that process. But we're looking to afford a separate entity those rights. Does that make sense?
No, but I, you know, I can talk, I'm not going to go around right now.
We're looking to give road commission employees an avenue to come straight to us.
They're not supposed to.
Yep.
But we've had prior, we have had prior legal counsel that said they could.
Sure. But our own department heads don't have recourse if they have an issue with any one of us not?
Well, they can come talk to me. I, you know, I'll talk to anybody.
Go ahead.
If I may, I think it's a mixed bag. I understand the point that you're making, um, just a couple of pieces. One is, uh, for me, number one, I don't have a road commissioner I want to get rid of. So let me be very clear, because I don't have the facts. Number one, in terms of how each individual commissioner has, has done or not done their job. Thus, request for inquiry. Um, when we did our inquiry, and we talked about this as a board, there was concerns, because all of the politics of it, about how deep we got into it. And at that time, we had debate, you can check the record, about whether or not we should be doing an inquiry where we're asking employees questions about who did what and et cetera, et cetera. So we decided that we would not do that. Thus, when we, um, our scope was very limited. We didn't investigate or inquire, because we also established we can't do an investigation into the employees of the road commission, right? So we kept our inquiry just at board members and we said also the managing director. So all of these pieces about the lawsuits and, uh, because they were still pending lawsuits. We didn't get into that. Shoemaker, you were there. We didn't ask questions that got into any lawsuits, who retaliated against who. We didn't touch any of that, because we wanted to be responsible, that we didn't do anything or nothing came out of the inquiry that would somehow impact those lawsuits. So I want to be very clear. Our inquiry was very limited, very, very limited to our board members for the most part, and the executive director, managing director, and what they thought the culture was. There, there was no leading question. Shoemaker, you were there. And we agreed, we asked, we did a good job. I think we did a great job. Okay, what do you think is happening? Do you think it's a good culture? Do you think it's whatever, whatever? Like very kind of general questions. And then we didn't produce the report, to be honest. And I stated this another way is because we then didn't want anything in the inquiry to then be used in a lawsuit, because we know that that could have been for you. You follow what I'm saying? So we handled this with very knit gloves. So I just wanted to make that point. The other point in terms of recourse, these are facts. When it comes to the Board of County Commissioners, we're accountable to the residents. That's our bosses. And if we violate the law per se, or if we violate the law, then a person can go to one of the, um, um, law enforcement authorities and then they get to the prosecutor's office and all of that. So residents, uh, our employees, if they say we stole money or whatever, there's somewhere they can go, they can go to the authorities. Because the, our bosses are our constituents. Well, it's different with the road commissioners, right? The road commission is the entity, the commissioners run the entity. So we don't have any authority there, no jurisdiction. We've given that away, they've done, they do that. But the road commissioners are appointees of this body who are accountable to our body. Why do I say they're accountable? Because we have the authority to appoint and to unappoint. So if there's consideration about unappointing somebody, how do you get to that point? Somebody's got to bring a complaint to you about someone acting inappropriately, their, their lack of duties or whatever case may be. The complaint's got to come to us. And, and even the law says that. And when it comes to us, we got to give them a due process. Well, how do you give them due process? How do you know if they're wrong or right? You got to investigate it. You got to inquire into it. That's how you get to whether or not there's cause to remove them. What I know is that we have at least one complaint sitting in our emails right now, only because we're trying to figure out how to react and respond. You're aware of that, Mr. Chair. That where the question is asked, if there's a complaint against the road commissioners who we appoint, they're accountable to us. We remove them, appoint them, do hearings, whatever case may be. They're asking the question, who do we take that complaint to? And, and that complaint does not go to an employee on the road commission. It doesn't go to one of our employees. They work for us, if you will. That complaint has got to come to us for us to look into it. What I want to caution us as a board is having preconceived notions, knowing that none of us have done an investigation, none of us have looked into any of these complaints. I want to caution us in taking sides as to who we think is guilty and who's not guilty. Because as a board, we've done no investigate, we have no statement of facts before us to judge that on. So thus this discussion. All of us are sick and tired of the foolishness that's been taking place or not taking place at the road commission. We're all tired of complaints coming to us. We're tired of the back and forth when there's appointments. We all are in the same place, maybe in different sides of the issue, but we all feel the same. We're sick and tired of it, right? Thus, uh, your proposal, you know, that'll be coming that, that you're suggesting there's other ways for us doing this. So if we're tired of the complaints, clearly there's an issue. And if there are complaints against our board members, then the responsible thing for us to do, as I conclude, is for us to look into any complaints that's against the people who represent us, to see if they're right or they're wrong, so that we know if we need to keep people there or to remove them. One other thing that's more important than everything I've said. I'm concerned at this point about liability that this county Board of Commissioners will have potentially. And liability that we will have as Genesee County entity by us continuing to take this approach that it's not our business, let them figure it out. We taking their hands off because we don't want to get dirty politically and we're sick and tired of them. That doesn't take away our responsibility. So if stuff keeps happening or not happening, I don't want somebody then to file suit or raise concern and say, we sent an email to the Board of Commissioners with complaints. We said we had complaints against the road commission. They argued about it in a meeting, postponed it two or three times and told us to go to hell. I know that's extreme. Let me be more professional. They told us it's not their problem, go back and talk to the road commission, who are the very people that we're making complaints about. So at the end of the day, let's cut out the politics on both sides of it. And just, let's just say as a board, how do we respond appropriately to the complaints we receive in a non, unbiased way? How do we gather the facts of complaints against our people in an unbiased way? So that at the end of the day, we're responsible to folks at the road commission. We're doing our due diligence as being responsible for that group. And we are upholding our legal responsibility, which, uh, our attorney put in both, and I know we're going to hear from him, which he had in both of these, uh, opinions, which are consistent, but a clarification, he quoted the law. The law says that we have responsibilities for these folks. And it's our job to, uh, react and respond to charges that come against commissioners. So that's all I have for the discussion.
Before I go to Mr. Shoemaker, just a couple of things. You said you, a couple of things that I have talked about before, you hit the nail on the head right there, charges. Okay? Couple of things I've talked about. How do you vet this? You open this door, it's potentially Pandora's box. Because not passing any judgment on this complaint here. Number one, there's no individual road commissioner named. It's the entire road commission board is, is racist, sexist, or against handicap people in, in ADA. So it's a, it's a broad-based complaint, right? So how do you vet? Are we going to investigate every complaint that comes down the pipe? I mean, how many hundreds of thousands of taxpayers' dollars are we going to spend investigating every one of these complaints? Because there's at this time, no vetting process to say, we feel it has credence. And, and then liability. If we feel this one has credence to investigate and we don't feel the next one does, then, then, then where's it stop, right? And it, it, just in my opinion, by just saying that the road commission, the entire board, or obviously individual members without naming them is bad. To me, it's almost like, uh, I'm going to show you the person and let you find the crime type of situation. Because there's no specificity. We're charged with removal. We can appoint, fill vacancies and remove. But if we're just given a blanket complaint that the road commission, commission board is bad, then in my, my, my mind, it's almost like a witch hunt. We're going to hire a third party so we can find that crime, so we can find that liability, so we can find that wrongdoing. But there's, there's no target. It's the board itself. So where does it end, right?
Just to answer your question, because you posed a specific question to me. One is that, um, um, just clarification, I used, I, for the public, I used the word charges against road commissioners, because that's the term that's used in the statute.
Right, it's, it's in the statute, charges for removal.
Yes. And then to answer your question, and it's, it's an excellent question. I appreciate the dialogue as well, because we need to have it. We haven't had this kind of dialogue, right? Um, but we're, in terms of a person's actual complaint, you know, whether it's general or specific, we don't get to pick what somebody's complaint is. What we can do is, in terms of when you talk about witch hunt or doing investigation, what we can do is go back to a person that files a complaint and says, hey, we receive your complaint, because we haven't even responded yet, right? Uh, we receive your complaint. Can you provide more specifics about what your concern is, right? And whether it's one complaint or it's a thousand complaints, even if we don't want to touch it, even if the politics of it is, are terrible and we sick and tired of it, we have a responsibility by way of the law and be, being responsible in, in our roles to vet any complaint we get for its validity or whether or not it's not true. And then to react and respond appropriately. Right now, as a commission, commission, as it relates to road commissioners, we're not reacting and responding at all, other than saying, we don't want to touch it. There's an email for the whole board that is in my email and your email. And I think, uh, our, our council's email that posed this simple question. And it's from the road, uh, an employee at the road commission. If I have, if, I'll be specific. If an employee of the road commission or a member of the public has a complaint against a road. public has a complaint against a road commissioner, who do we give that complaint to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That's an email that's sitting in our email right now that has not been responded to.
And without violating privilege, we were told they have a process, they should follow it at the road commission.
Okay. But then the law, and I think that's what Brian clarified, because we can't go off opinions and the politics of it, you got to go off the law. The law and both of his opinions say that those charges or those complaints, I'm paraphrasing, that that comes to us. So we can't, we can't have an employee at the road commission have a complaint against a road commissioner, and just hear me out and indulge me. We, they can't come to us, I mean, they can't have a complaint about people we're responsible for, and we tell them, don't bring the complaint to us, take it to the road commissioner's attorney, the road commissioner's attorney, and your complaint against the road commissioner. So that's like, an employee has an issue with me, and I say, don't talk to the law, right? Go talk to Brian. That's my attorney. What kind of advice you think you're gonna get? And that's what the original opinion said. And so I'm not gonna put Brian on the spot, and he can come up and answer. I called Brian, and I said, based on the law that you have in this report, which we all call Brian if we got a question. So I didn't do anything wrong. I called Brian, I said, Brian, in this original, um, um, piece that you gave us, there's law quoted here that says, you know, we appoint, we remove, you know, for cause, how do you get to the cause? Or, um, how do you, uh, uh, confirm if there is cause without doing an investigation or inquiry? And immediately, I didn't say, say this, he's like, no, you got to do an inquiry, you got to do investigations, the same as if it's this, that, and another, blah, blah, blah. I won't go into all of the details of what he gave, but what I said to him is, I says, okay, based on what you're saying, this is not clear, because it appears what you gave us is in conflict with what the statute says. And then he says, well, hey, you know, and you can speak for yourself, he says, well, I was actually approaching this from this angle and this thought, also with concern for liability for, for the county, et cetera, et cetera. And this is what I said, and then you can ask him.
Well, I want, I think we want to be careful to expose it too much.
Yeah, I understand.
Confidential.
And, and so then I said, as it relates to our role, we got to respond to this email that we got, that we received from somebody that we need to respond to, okay? Uh, that we got to respond, and when we respond, we can't send them back to the people that they're complaining about. You understand? And what he said was, he says, okay, I see that, I didn't respond to that in this, I'm responding to these things over here. I'll provide clarification to what I said. And both opinions he provided, although it may not say what this one wants to say or this one wants to say, is consistent with the law. And that's his job, to give us an opinion that's consistent with the law. So how many complaints they file, we don't control that. Our responsibility is to respond appropriately to the complaints that are received, whatever that is, whether I like it or you like it. As a board, we got to come together about what that looks like, let the, the research, the inquiry take its course, do what it's gonna do, and guess what? If the whole commission comes back and everybody's done good and right, great. If it comes back and there's somebody who isn't doing right, then we have a responsibility there as well.
And I think we need to remember the other piece, we cannot compel them to comply, to participate, and so if we spend tens of thousands of dollars to hire this attorney, they don't have to-
We can. We can.
When it gets to our level.
Yeah, yeah.
When it gets to removal.
Yeah, we can.
If we hire a third party, we can't compel them to.
Not with the third party.
Right.
But this board, through the proper channels, has subpoena power to subpoena people into a discussion to ask questions. And I'm not even suggesting-
Sure.
I'm not even suggesting today that we, I'm not even suggest, let me be clear, I'm not even suggesting that we go over to the road commission, line up every employee at the road commission, bring them in and start asking them, who, you know, who did what, et cetera, et cetera. I'm, that's not even what I'm suggesting. What I'm suggesting is, if we get a complaint against our board members, that we either do an inquiry, I don't think we should, because our board is biased in different directions.
You, you want, you-
That we have a third party-
You're in favor of a third party option.
We have a third party do it, that we all agree on, right? Let them go inquire, bring us the facts, and then we respond appropriately. Maybe there's nothing there. Maybe there is. But what we can't do as a board, and, and what we can't do as a board is continue to say, we're not gonna touch it, because we're tired of all of the drama at the road commission.
I understand. Mr. Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I just, maybe I misunderstood this, but I, I thought that actually the road commission has a policy, and they, they hire a third-party attorney when they have complaints like this. Is that true?
They do.
So they're, once they get a complaint, they're hiring a third-party attorney to look into it.
Yes.
Okay. And ethically, that attorney's job is to find what was wrong.
Mm-hmm.
And in this instance, that was done. Do we know?
Don't know that.
Okay.
No.
That would be before we start our own investigation something.
We, we received an email March 5th that there was, the policy was lacking. March 20th, that policy for complaints against the road commissioners was updated and placed into the employee handbook.
So as an attorney, if you were an attorney, and you were to give an opinion that just benefited the road commission, and an individual was to take you to us, the road commission to court, it would look pretty bad if your opinion was self-biased, for your law firm or for you. So when you hire that third party, you're hiring somebody with competence. We had something in similar instance happen in Fenton Township. Nobody liked what the attorney told us, we really loved the individual, but guess what? It was, it was not a good situation. Because, and their job was to find what was there. So they have a policy in place, they have tried to do this. You know, I, I guess, you know, on top of it, you're asking, you're letting, I can't tell you how many times I've probably had an employee here mad at Sean Shoemaker, because something I went after, or something I said, or something I did. If they were allowed to launch a complaint with somebody else and go, hey, we want to look into him, and we're gonna go after this, and this, and this, that, what a nightmare. These are people that decide their wages, these are people that decide the hours they work, these are the people that decide how much overtime is paid, and so on and so forth. And every time you want to turn around, you're gonna let them just come, hey, this is what it is, and we're gonna stick our nose in here, we're gonna stick our nose in here. Now, if the law says we have responsibility to do it, that's what we need to know for sure. I, I think it's a very broad broom you're sweeping the floor with on top of, if you're going the whole road commission without any specific allegations against anybody, I think that's BS.
I didn't, I didn't say that.
Hold on.
Yeah, I didn't say that.
Let me finish.
Because, well, we're, we're talking the whole road commission. There's no name on here, there's no nothing. It's the road commission. You know, I, I find it funny when people accuse and they paint with such a broad brush that people can interpret it any way they want. It's a great way to tell the story, because guess what? Our minds create what we want to hear. I'm guilty of it, and if you can admit you're strong enough to do it, we all do it. But the thing is, is we need to, we need the real facts. If, number one, it's our responsibility, fine. I've heard it's not our responsibility as far as financially, because they are their own entity. That's why when we have to, if we do a project with them or give them funds, we have to approve it just like it's outside of our organization. I just am gonna tell you this. I'm very frustrated with this, because we've went after road commission directors, commissioner directors, now we're going after road commission, we didn't get our way. And they hired an attorney, a third-party credible attorney, and now that's not enough. And I, I guess, when is it enough? If our attorney comes back and they say they didn't find anything, are we at fault now? If that's what we choose to do? I'd like, like I said, I'd like to hear what our attorney has to say about this. Fill us in a little bit, because we're gonna debate this all night, and we're gonna be here tonight, for the sake of everybody, and me included. Um, this is something we'll probably have to touch on later, which I think is fine, because I love that we're having the discussion, and I think it should be discussed. But we need to know that, and then guess what? I think if we do have any inkling of moving forward, you need more detail, you can't just go after them. And what's frustrating me also is not once, again, has, have most of us reached out to the people who are being accused of these things? I spoke to the road commissioner who just resigned. I asked why, and my answers, the answers were quite shocking. When it's gonna be the point where eventually one of these employees is gonna go, this is a hostile work environment here, we're gonna sue, we're gonna sue the road commission ourselves. Because the road commissioners didn't do anything for us, or whatever. This is, it's just a slippery slope. I would, to move things forward, I would, could we please have Corporation Council, if it please, Chair, come up and explain to us why the change, or what they're actually stating?
Well, you would have to, I believe, be a closed session if we're gonna discuss his attorney client, or the confidential opinion. It was privileged. Unless, I do believe, you know. I believe in order to waive that privilege, the whole board has to vote to approve it, right? We don't have the full board here tonight, so that would have to take place at least next Wednesday.
Can we add it to the, um, we can add it to the, I can think I can do that as Chair, right?
Add that closed session.
Okay, okay, all right, fine.
Make sure it's on there for you. Is there any further discussion for tonight, Nanda?
Not discussion, comment. I, I think it's been great discussion tonight, you know, although, you know, there are different perspectives and so many different thoughts about this. I mean, you know, this is what we're here for. It's a, it's a, it's, it's something that we got to bring answers, clarity to, but it's also a discussion we got to have. So I just appreciate, you know, the respect we've shown as we've discussed this tonight. It's been a good discussion.
Anything further? See, nothing, we're gonna close. Road commission discussion, Resolution 2025-1534, approval of purchase agreement for 452 South Saginaw Street, an amount not to exceed $300,000.
Move it.
Motion to support. Any discussion?
Um, I requested an appraisal of this piece of property, appraisal came back above what the selling price is. Thank you very much for everyone going through the process.
Sure. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2025-1592, approval of an agreement between Genesee County, Genesee Area Focus, Genesee Chamber Foundation to provide summer employment opportunities for youth.
Move it.
We'll go that, back to that one. So we got motion to support. Any discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're gonna go back to number one. 2025-1444, approval of purchase order to Jack Dohany Company for the fiscal year ending 2025, in an amount not to exceed $100,000, provide parts and repair to drain equipment. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the accounts listed. Got motion to support?
Support. Good question.
Go ahead.
Just, this is a budgeted expense, or is this an addition to the budget?
spoken from the drain offices here.
Hello?
So it is in our budget, but because it's such a large amount, we would have to have the purchase order approved by the board. So it does include an emergency purchase from last fall, between 35 and 40,000, and then, right now, we're at about 69,000, but I wanted to make sure if we had any more repairs before the end of the year, we'd be covered through this fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Any none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?